We will call to order the May 8, 2025 Danby Select Board Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry. All right, Haynes.
Here.
Fuller, Abbott.
Here.
Eaton, Bender.
Here.
So Fuller and Eaton are absent.
Okay, my paper with the remote access statement on it has disappeared, but I'm sure you've all heard it enough times that you know what it is. Do we have any questions on that? You're limited to three minutes. When we open the floor to the public, that is the time to ask questions. If something comes up under new business, we will reopen the floor again for comments. Motion to set the agenda. We are going to take that item off old business that has been complied with. And I think since we only have three select board members here this evening, and we have an awful lot on the agenda, I would be in favor of removing the transfer station relocation discuss discussion. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So then motion to set the agenda. Oh, and we also, under Road Commissioners' report, have the MRGP annual report to sign and the grants and aid application to sign.
We also need to remove the Treasurer's report.
And we can remove the Treasurer's report since she is not here. Okay.
The motion that we set the agenda as amended.
Steve?
I will second that.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we will open the floor to, oh, who is participating virtually?
Yep. And just a reminder, if you can state for the people on the phone who is motioning and who is seconding, it's helpful for them.
Okay.
As well as for me.
And hopefully everybody can hear. We have a new raised stand for the microphone.
Yeah, they could hear the pledge, so.
Any problems with that, let us know and we'll see what we can do. Okay, so who's virtually?
So the list is Gary Deere, Dave, we have Renetta, I can't pronounce it, I can never remember.
Yeah, worse than that.
Thank you. Sharon White, Terry Parker, and iPhone 3.
Okay, thank you. So, public comment?
If people have not signed the clipboard that's going around, please do so that I have who's here in person. Thank you.
Any public comment? I have to ask it three times. Here's the third chance. Any public comment?
I have a question considering public comment. I'm going to read my personal assessment for the auditor position.
That's on the.
Correct. If another auditor makes, wants to make a statement afterwards, can I ask?
Yes, it's the auditor's report, so I have the three auditors.
Okay.
Participating.
Thank you.
Okay, we're closing the public comment, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of April 10.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made by Steve Haynes.
I will second that.
Seconded by Kenny Abbott. Any corrections on the minutes?
There is one correction. Drew, you could help me out.
Yeah, I was not present at the last meeting.
And so we believe it's Andrea Stoller?
Yes.
Okay, so that needs to be.
Were you participating virtually at the.
Yes, I was on at the very end.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll add that to the minutes. Any other corrections? All those in favor of adopting the minutes as corrected, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and we will now open the meeting to a presentation from Rutland Regional Planning Commission regarding Act 181.
Yeah, first off, thank you so much for putting time on the agenda for us to talk about this. I have a kind of slide presentation handout for folks in the room. For folks online, I also just want to mention that this presentation handout is at our website, So, you know, just so if anyone wants to follow along online or afterwards. And I also have, oh yeah, here you go.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. I also have a few copies for folks in the room. I have three copies, hopefully folks can share if anyone's interested.
If somebody wants a copy, I already attended a meeting on this, so I'm willing to give this to anybody.
Let me grab it. Here you go. One more copy, anyone? Here you go.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. I also, there was a handout that was also sent to Brad as well, that I have a few extra copies. That's basically, it's a lot more in-depth information that's kind of useful to reference. This same information's also on that same website, rutlandrpc/plan2026. But this is really kind of just a handout for reference. If folks want one, let me know. But really, we'll be kind of working through this slide deck that I handed out. So I'm here to talk tonight kind of about two things, the Rutland Regional Plan update. And so the, you know, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, we have this regional plan that we update every eight years. The first plan was in the early 70s, I believe it was adopted in 1972. So we're talking about this plan kind of writ large, but there's also kind of a focus on the future land use map, which is kind of one piece of the regional plan that's been around since the 70s, but a change in state law, Act 181, has kind of quote unquote "modernized" the framework, if you will. And so I'll be kind of talking about, you know, the regional plan at large, but kind of with a focus on this future land use map, and then also, you know, what does it mean for Danby? And yeah, so I'm going to kind of walk through this, these slides right now. And so, you know, on the cover page of these slides, we're going through kind of multiple phases of public engagement. So we've been getting public input for about over a year now on the regional plan, and it's been divided over three phases. With our first phase, kind of was spearheaded through an array of efforts, including a survey that got input from about 1,200 residents across the region. And so we've had these multiple phases, and this is phase three. And we're kind of trying to get input on the plan at large, and I'll be talking about that tonight too. But we kind of have these two questions that we want to get public input on, is, does the plan reflect the right community economic development priorities for the region? And I'll kind of explain what is community economic development, as well as, do these priorities make the region a place you want to live, work, and play? The next page of the slide handout is kind of an overview of what we'll cover. So I'll kind of give a broad overview of what is the purpose of a regional plan, the design of the regional plan, kind of the chapters of the regional plan are also called the elements of the regional plan. And then I'll kind of give some opportunities for public input. We'll kind of dive into the future land use map, this new framework for, you know, mapping across the state. And I'll also kind of talk about some other opportunities to engage on the plan at large. So starting off on the next slide, you know, talking about the regional plan purpose and design, I kind of want to call out, in the top right corner, you'll see that there's applicable Vermont statutes, and so that this plan, you actually see in this right corner as a common theme over the next couple of slides, on that, you know, a good chunk of the plan is really driven by state statute. Just like the Danby Town Plan, there are state statutes that have requirements of, you know, what is required to be included in a town plan. Similarly, there are statutes that are similar, albeit a little bit different, for the regional plan. What is the regional plan? It's, you know, it's over an eight-year timeframe, so we're looking to have this plan adopted in mid-2026, and so it goes over eight years. And so that would be, you know, ending around 2034, and that's sort of the type, that's the timeframe we're talking about when we're talking about this plan. We're trying to, you know, the plans around community economic development, and community economic development really is balancing economic development with our social, cultural, and environmental priorities. You know, the plan's trying to shape a pattern, design, and function to meet future needs. And you know, the nexus of the plan is kind of analysis of growth and conservation, and how do we balance the two. I mentioned that, you know, the plan is driven by state statute, but it's also driven by our organization's values that are kind of listed here on the bottom. We want this plan to be flexible. You know, there are towns across the region that kind of have various, you know, degrees of involvement in land use planning. So 26 out of the 27 towns in the region have a town plan, but about 1 in 4 towns, including Danby, you know, there's no zoning or subdivision regulations. So, you know, we really want to acknowledge that, you know, that there are towns that regulate land use with zoning and subdivision regulations, and there aren't. And we want this plan to work for all towns. We also want the plan to be, you know, locally led. You know, that's, having local buy-in is not only just a good thing in general, but it's also, you know, it's going to make the plan more successful and, you know, make sure that certain people aren't favored over others. There's also values of equity and sustainability, and we also want the plan to kind of be outcome-driven so we can kind of say, have a better sense of whether we can actually gauge progress. If we do that, are we making progress on the goal, or are we not making progress? And so that's kind of like writ large, the purpose, the design of the plan. We go to the next page of the slide deck, there's kind of a graphic representation of each chapter of the regional plan. So, you know, the chapters of the regional plan range from things like economic development to natural resources, to transportation, to housing, the working landscape. And, you know, while all these chapters kind of are separate, they all are related, and really the land use chapter, and in part the future land use map, is kind of at the nexus of a lot of these chapters. So that's, you know, just from a broad overview of the regional plan, you know, now I'm going to dive into the kind of future land use map and these specific categories. And so if you go on the next slide, you'll see here that there are basically about 11 land use categories that are kind of depicted in this graphic. And really, you know, the state in 2024 passed this law, Act 181, where they're trying to standardize future land use maps. So I had mentioned that we've had this regional plan and a future land use map dating back to 1972, and our organization has had discretion to categorize in different ways. And this law kind of set up a standardized framework so that when you look across the 11 regions, the 11 regional planning commissions' future land use maps, that they're all using these same schemes or categories, if you will. And then, you know, alongside that, Act 181 set out these specific criteria to determine if a, you know, a town can be mapped in one category or another category. I'm going to kind of now kind of walk through, on a regional perspective, these categories so that everyone kind of has an understanding on like from a region-wide scale, you know, what these categories, and this is where I'm going to start swiveling. And I'm going to kind of walk through some of these categories, but you know, I also really want to focus on Danby since we're here tonight. But, and so, there are 11 categories, and you know, there are these downtown centers and village centers, which are sort of the mixed-use core of a community. Is my audio, can you hear me all right? Great. And yeah, and so, you know, there are these downtown centers or village centers that are kind of the mixed-use core of the community. What is the difference between a downtown center and a village center? State law basically says that the difference between a downtown center and a village center is whether the municipality has things like zoning, subdivision regulations, sanitary sewer systems, public water systems. These aren't, Danby doesn't have zoning, doesn't have, you know, a public sanitary sewer system, right? Yep. And so, you know, Danby does have some village centers that I'll talk about tonight, but I just want you all to be aware that there are these downtown centers and these village centers, and that Danby has village centers. There are also these planned growth areas or village areas, which are kind of like neighborhoods that would surround the mixed-use center, and are kind of targeted for a certain like higher-density growth relative to the region. And, you know, some of the criteria for planned growth areas and village areas is that the municipality has to have zoning and subdivisions and public sanitary sewer and public water. And so Danby wouldn't have any of these planned growth areas or village areas because they don't have these regulations or infrastructure. That's how the state has designed the law. There are also these transition areas, which are kind of these areas that are, you know, if there's also a public sanitary sewer system or also a public water system that's not classified, and some of these other categories I just mentioned, they could be classified as transition infill and trying to make it more dense. Again, Danby doesn't have public sanitary sewer systems, and that's why I'm trying to go through these kind of quick for you, just so that you're aware of them, but I really want to keep the focus too on Danby since we're here tonight. And there are also these enterprise areas, and enterprise areas are kind of industrial parks or, you know, maybe a manufacturing facility, and they kind of have the infrastructure to accommodate kind of a, you know, a higher density of employment or, you know, a large amount of land area to cover, a large amount of land area essentially, that's going to occupy. So like, for example, like a natural resource extraction site, you know, that's going to use a big amount of land. There are also these resource-based recreation areas, which are kind of recreation areas with a lot of development or infrastructure surrounding them. So some examples in the region are like ski resorts with condos nearby, or a shoreline where the shoreline development, there's like, not, you know, a few homes or something like that on a shoreline, but like a pretty developed shoreline, or you know, half, if we're looking at a whole pond, maybe half the pond is developed and half of it isn't. But that's sort of what a resource-based recreation area is. Then there are these rural categories, rural general, rural ag and forestry, and rural conservation. And really what the difference in these categories are is where we as an organization are trying to give support for future activities. You know, so for rural general, we're trying to, you know, really encourage, you know, support rural development. For rural ag and forestry, you know, we're trying to support agricultural and forestry activities, and rural conservation, we're trying to support conservation. We're also trying to, you know, as I mentioned earlier, trying to make this plan flexible. You know, we're not, we're not saying, for instance, that rural conservation means you can't put a single-family home or something like that. So, you know, it's kind of more where we're giving our support, but not saying that you can't develop or things like that, albeit depending on the specific lot, there might be other reasons, you know, for Act 250 or things like that that might make it tricky, or, you know, there might not be suitable soils to put in a septic system, something like that. The next two slides are kind of a percentage on the region-wide scale for each category, what percent of land is made up of specific categories, and what percentage of buildings are in specific categories. And, you know, these sort of, really the main takeaway when you look at these two slides is really that the rural categories represent about 94% of the region. The region is largely rural. And, you know, these sort of downtown centers or village centers, planned growth areas, village areas are relatively small percentage of the region, but they kind of have a high percentage of the amount of buildings in the region. And unless folks have any questions about the region, I'm now going to kind of shift to talking about Danby specifically, and I'm going to kind of talk about, as I mentioned, that RRPC has had a future land use map over the years, so I'm going to first start off kind of giving a brief just kind of overview of what the current, adopted in 2018, future land use map for the RRPC in the town of Danby, and then we'll look at the draft map. And ultimately, it's just a draft. Yeah, so. Now I'm swiveling over here. There we go. Oh, geez. Sorry about that. Appreciate it. It was flexible. Yeah, so the RR, and I recognize the legend's in kind of a weird spot here, so. The RRPC, as I mentioned, we, prior to Act 181 and this new framework, we as an organization could choose how to categorize land in different ways in this future land use map. And really, the, we as an organization, we had four categories, high density, medium density, low density, and development constrained. And so, in Danby, there are three categories that show up, and that would be medium density, low density, and development constrained. You know, here, the medium density is really a, and something I also want to mention is that this map is depicting firm lines, and so you can kind of see where a line, you know, one district ends and another district starts. If you look at our map on the region-wide scale, it's actually blurred, so it's harder to depict whether or not, when one boundary starts and another boundary stops. This map doesn't do that. This map is not blurred. But I want to call out that, you know, our current map has been blurred, but we're no longer able to do that under this new framework. And so you'll notice that there's more detail. When we get to the next map, you'll notice that there's more detail, and there's more categories. So yeah, Danby Borough is really where the medium density is, you know, for the most part, most of Danby, maybe most is a bit of a stretch, but a good chunk of Danby is, you know, low density, mapped as low-density development, and really this is sort of more of a rural residential development category. And then development constrained is sort of more of the, I guess you could say, parts of Danby where there's steeper slopes, or, you know, there's other constraints that might make it more difficult to be able to develop. Does this map kind of make sense to folks, or? Great. And one other thing I think I should mention, just so like, what is the point of a future land use map? Is that, you know, and it really is applicable, it helps guide development through kind of, you know, encouraging certain activities, but it also has a regulatory role in the sense that just specifically only for Act 250 purposes, there's 10 criteria, so if you have to go through Act 250 and get an Act 250 permit, the 10th criteria is conformance with the municipal or regional plan. And so, and from a regulatory perspective, that's where this would show up. But if you don't have to get an Act 250 permit, then this map, this map or the map we're going to be talking about in a second, it wouldn't really show up in, you know, what you're, if you're trying to develop. Yeah, and I guess I'll go to the next map. And this is the draft map that, you know, I mentioned, this new framework. And one thing I also, I'm not sure if I mentioned, but I kind of want to reiterate, is that this map, there is specific criteria that state law outlines in order for us to, you know, be able to determine if an area is eligible or not eligible. There's also, in addition to state law, there's also, can I apologize? Oh, thank you so much, Dreya. There's also a methodology that all the regional planning commissions put together so that we're interpreting the law the same way. And so now I'm going to kind of guide through some of these districts, or categories, if you will. And then, yeah, I'm going to basically guide through the categories, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments or concerns, things like that. So the village center, Danby has two village center categories. In Danby Borough, there's a village center, and how the boundary of the village center was determined was that essentially, Danby has opted to enroll in the state designation program framework, and so Danby has a state-designated village center, you know, that was enrolled years ago. And, you know, this, this boundary for, is, the entirety, sorry, of that current designation that the town has is in this, in this village center boundary. In addition to, the boundary has been extended on North Main Street to some adjacent residential lots, as well as to some land that would have what we call suitable soils, and a good question would be, is what is suitable soils? And that's one of the terms that the regional planning commissions and this methodology, we all wanted to get on the same page of, we're all interpreting the term suitable soils in the same way. So the state of Vermont has a data set where you can see how suitable soils are for a septic system, and it basically creates all these different categories, I think it's five or six categories, and class one through three essentially in this mapping framework is what is quote-unquote "suitable soils." So essentially, the village center is the current state-designated village center that the town has opted into, and it's extended on North Main Street. And the second village center pertains to Danby Four Corners. And I want to recognize that the, we're, part of this that we see, you can see here on the map, is that each road name is labeled, and you can also see that there's a word of kind of the name of Danby and Danby Four Corners. And so I recognize that the word "Danby Four Corners" is kind of covering a good bit of the boundary, so I have like a zoomed-in map for folks, just so that you can get a better sense of what exactly is this boundary. And I'll also just kind of explain, you know, how this happened. Hopefully this will be a little bit easier to just kind of get a sense of, you know, where these boundaries start and stop, and I also have a handful of boundaries here. There you go. Yeah, absolutely. I have extra copies if anyone else.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Two more copies, anyone?
One, please.
Yeah, and so, you know, Danby Four Corners is, I actually want to start with, what is the Danby Town Plan talk about with Danby Four Corners? And it characterizes Danby Four Corners as the community center, like kind of pre the development of Danby Borough, you know, and it's kind of the second-largest population center was another term I saw in the Danby Town Plan. And it's also kind of, there's also a quote that I wanted to call out in the Danby Town Plan, that the majority of the town's flat land is located in Danby Four Corners' upland plateau at an elevation of approximately 1,400 feet. So essentially, you know, there's some flat land in Danby Four Corners, and I think that's something worth noting as we talk about this. So Danby Four Corners at the corner of Tinmouth Road and Danby-Pallett Road, the boundaries are based on kind of existing development, and they're kind of snapped to, snapped is really just that they're aligned with parcel boundaries, except that south of the intersection on Tinmouth Road, there's about kind of an 825-foot section in each direction that has kind of some land that's not currently developed, that could accommodate kind of some future development that would kind of fit the existing development pattern in Danby Four Corners. And so, Danby Borough, Danby Four Corners are mapped as village centers, and so part of what's changing through Act 181 is that when the regional, when the regional plan, our board has to vote to, votes on the regional plan and votes to approve it, and the board is made up of one representative from each municipality in the region, and then what's new in this state law, we've never had to do this before, but we will now, is that we have to get our plan approved by a new board from the state, the Vermont State Land Use Review Board. And when that plan, when we go through this process, and when and if the plan is approved, upon approval, these village center boundaries would be enrolled in the state designation program, and so they're kind of changing the state designation program to relate to these boundaries, and they're kind of changed the framework a bit. And so what this means is that for folks who currently are in the state designation program, they are keeping their benefits. Nothing changes, same benefits. And so some examples of what are the benefits would be, you can get a tax credit for a facade improvement from the state, or things like, I believe also another one might have to do with like fire safety codes and things like that. But essentially, there are these tax credits from the state. That's, that's one of the common benefits. So no one, everyone's maintaining their benefits, no one's losing any benefits, nothing like that. The only thing that's happening is that people are gaining benefits from the state. And really, that would most particularly be in Danby Four Corners. And really, that would most particularly be in Danby Four Corners, where these parcels would be eligible as a Step One Center, is what the state calls it. And, you know, so, just so folks are kind of clear of like, okay, well, what are the benefits for this new area in Danby Four Corners? It's eligibility for, you know, a grant program, the Better Places Grant Program, which is kind of a place-making grant, and then eligibility for these tax credits that I was mentioning. And then it also gives some priority funding for specific planning grants as well. And so that's, that is the benefit essentially afforded to the town. I'm kind of interested to know, like, your thoughts on this boundary? Does this, does this make sense? Does it, does it not make sense?
It makes any sense.
Yeah, gotcha.
Personally, I think we'll be waiting until there's an interest in development in the Four Corners, or land available to develop in the Four Corners, before we consider that a village center.
Yeah.
And when you make the comment about based on population, I can think of, for instance, Quarry Hill or Scottsville has greater populations than Danby Four Corners. And also, that land on the west side of the Brook Road is owned by Smokey House, and I do believe that has some kind of restrictions on it.
Yeah, and I think the, yeah, I think you make an interesting point, too, about the sort of existing density. Would you think those areas you just mentioned would be something that might be looked at as a village center? Or you think more just, you know, Danby Borough being the one village center, you think that's more appropriate?
Yes.
Yeah. You're saying yes to just the one?
Just the one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's helpful feedback. Yep.
Yeah, you have a farm, you have a vacant mobile home, you have a substation of the fire department, you have a daycare, and you have three residences, and a church. To me, that doesn't, it's like any kind of...
Yeah, and it, I think the, it might be helpful to kind of have, there's kind of different contexts of other village centers, so, and I don't know how helpful, but there are village centers at that scale in the region that are, you know, comparable in having, you know, a couple, like the fire station and a daycare and a couple residences, and that being eligible because it's a couple, you know, basically, non-residential or commercial enterprises and a few residences, relatively compact, and, you know, being a historical development area. And so for all those reasons, it technically qualifies. You know, ultimately, if you all are like, no, like, this would not be a good idea of Danby Four Corners, that's something we definitely would like to know. And I should have mentioned this when I started talking about this, but essentially, one of the things I'm here to ask is that if there are any questions, or if you want to make any adjustments, such as saying, hey, like, we don't want Danby Four Corners as a village center, we're looking for those in writing, just so that we have it documented in writing, from the select board, basically, by May 30th. And so, yeah, so that's, that's great to know.
So I have one comment online and one question online. So Dave has commented online, "Found the map," she, I'll reprovide her with the link here, "The fields of the Danby Four Corners area to the east of Tinmouth Road are soggy, soaking wet, and a lot of, a lot of the time. They are not appropriate for development." And then she also asked, "What is your name?" Again, so we...
Yep, yeah, my name is Logan Solomon. I can spell, do you want me to spell it?
Logan Solomon. Yeah, if you could spell it, that'd be great.
Yeah, S.O.L.O.M.
I'm getting it on.
Oh, great, awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Was there another comment, or was just, was that the?
That was, that was it.
Okay.
And who was that?
Jade.
Jade?
Which is...
I don't know who Jade is, but Jade is on the line.
Okay.
Yep, and so now I'm going to move to this, unless we can talk anymore about Danby Borough, or, I was going to now move to these enterprise areas on the map, which are depicted in purple. And so, you know, closer to the Wallingford border, and to mention, all of these are, have to do with parcel boundaries. So how is the boundary determined is just tracing what the current parcel is. So closer to the Wallingford border, Pike Industries, as well as the Vermont Fikster Corporation, I believe that's a manufacturing operation, are the two up here. So, you know, Pike Industries is the bigger, sorry about that, Pike Industries is the bigger of the two, and the smaller is the manufacturing, Vermont Store Fikster Corporation.
And don't you have Otter Creek Fund Center on there, too?
So I, we currently don't, but you know, that was one of those that I think could be, could be. And so do you think that would make, that would make sense?
Planning Commission changed the map, the local map, many years ago to include that.
Yeah, because, you know, part of the enterprise area is that it's like using a large amount, like it's a commercial operation that's using a large amount of land, and so I think it would fit that definition.
And since we only have two miles of US 7 in Danby, that's where it would happen.
Right. Yeah, that's a good thought. Near, near the village, there's, there's the current parcel boundary for, yeah, the current, yeah, Fuller Sand and Gravel is one of the areas. And then the Vermont Danby Marble Quarry, which is on the southern part of Danby, is the other enterprise area. And so those, those four businesses, and, you know, I think the Fund Center you just mentioned, I think that seems like a pretty reasonable addition as well. That would be the enterprise areas. And then after the enterprise areas, there are these rural categories. So, you know, in terms of the remaining land area, about, basically, the agriculture and forestry category are parcels enrolled in the current use program. The current use program is a tax program, and in order to qualify, you have to document that you're doing certain agricultural and forestry activities. And really, the point of this category is to give support to agriculture and forestry. So it's a useful program to be able to determine, okay, there's some sort of agriculture or forestry going on. The rural agriculture and forestry category is the, is, in terms of percentage of land area, is the biggest category in Danby, with about 50%, 57%, sorry, of Danby in this category. Rural General is the category I mentioned, that we're kind of supporting low-density rural development, that's kind of compatible with the working landscape. That's about 24% of Danby. And, you know, I guess you could say is in the, it's largely, I guess you could say, east of the Danby Four Corners area, is the biggest block, really, of Rural General. And then rural conservation is about 14% of land area. And this is the areas I mentioned, we're not saying that you can't, that there's, we're not saying that you can't develop, we're just saying that we're trying to really support the, give our highest level of support towards conservation, and that there might be those sort of challenges in developing. So, so any questions or thoughts about the map from here? I was going to turn to, you know, this, this kind of, how can you engage with the regional plan at large, not just the map itself? Great. So we are nearing towards, like I mentioned, we're having three phases of public engagement on the entire regional plan. And the regional plan will be, you know, over 100 pages, and so we want, we want to offer accessible opportunities for folks to participate and understand kind of what the plan's about. On the most accessible, basic level, we have this kind of fun graphic cartoon that kind of gets at, you know, some of the ideas that the plan is talking about. And so for instance, you know, we're trying to encourage the most intensive, highest-density development, where there's infrastructure. So in places like Rutland City, you know, there are communities that have infrastructure, that have sanitary sewer systems with plenty of capacity. We want to protect, you know, wildlife, we want to protect scenic resources, you know, flooding is a challenge, there's a need for more affordable housing, but, you know, the market has made it challenging in order to kind of meet that affordable housing need, and kind of has encouraged some luxury housing. And, you know, also, you know, that there are a bunch of historic buildings in villages and across the region that could be kind of reused for modern times, but keeping that historic character. And so this is just really a fun graphic to get a sense of the plan from kind of the highest level, kind of where we're at. Maybe one more I'll call out is that, you know, we want to support forest products, and so an example here is the, you know, maple syrup. You know, maybe this visualization isn't enough for you, right? You want, you want more information. And so we have these chapter summaries, and I mentioned earlier that there are, there's a graphic in here that kind of shows all the chapters of the regional plan. And so for each one of these chapters, we have a one-page summary. And this graphic and that one-page summary for each chapter are all aligned on our website, And, yeah, and so that, that's, you know, and then you can also read the regional plan. That will be, that will be available in about the next month. This and the chapter summaries are available right now. And, yeah, and so, you know, this visualization, those chapter summaries, the plan, we're all trying to get feedback on, you know, does the, does the plan writ large, not just the future land use map, but does the plan reflect the right community economic development priorities? And do those priorities make the region a place you want to live, work, and play? So essentially, you know, next steps from here would be for the town, you know, to submit what adjustments you would like on that map to us by May 30, so that we can have time to incorporate them. We, we have a pretty specific timeline we need to fit in order to get our plan adopted by 2026, which may seem like it's kind of far, but it takes us like about four, six months of certain procedures we have to do per state law to get the plan adopted. So it's actually, the horizon of getting this map and the plan finalized to go through that public process, the formal public process, is coming pretty soon. And then giving, giving input on the visualization, the chapter summaries, and the plan, that would be also, you know, much appreciated, really, from now through the end of June. We'll be doing public engagement, and we'll be hosting a handful of events as well on the plan writ large. I, you know, I know this is a regular meeting, and so I really appreciate you taking the time to give us a lot for us to discuss this. So thank you so much.
So, on that village center at Four Corners, I'm kind of hearing a sense of the board that the board's not in favor of it. So if someone would care to make a motion to that effect, we can answer your question.
Yep.
And it'll be in the minutes, and that way it's in writing, because it's hard to always get...
And can I just make another, and maybe the answer is you still need to deliberate or whatever, and that's totally okay, but I also, I know you mentioned the other enterprise area as well, and so I don't know if you guys, I also just need that in writing, whether it's the minutes or whatever.
I can state that in the minutes.
Well, I'm wondering if there's someone willing to make a motion to the effect of eliminating the other village center and adding the enterprise on Route 7 North.
I will make a motion to eliminate the Four Corners designation and add the Fund Center.
Would you second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There. So it'll be in the minutes.
Great, perfect.
And we'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for taking the time to come down.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you for making the time.
Okay, well, Ethan is packing up. The next order of business is the delinquent tax collector's report.
All right. I sent you guys an email, not really much of a report, but more of a question, to see if you guys approve the following properties to be put up the tax sale. And you should have the copies you can take and go through them and reading through these. We got Crissy on North Main Street, that's a building with 3/4 of an acre, 0.67 of an acre. We got Fleishman in Scottsville on Fifth Road, that's building with 1 acre land.
Is that the A-frame?
No, I'm not sure what's Fleishman, I'm not sure what hers is. We've got Greenwich on Green Hill Road, building with 2 and 1/2 acres. Jindell's, Pollet Road, Daisy Lane, that one is a mobile home on 2.6 acres. We got Reed, that's in Scottsville on Reed Lane, a building with 6.3 acres. And Shirley Clark Crossup on Easy Street, that's a building with 15.71 acres. And what I'm really looking forward to is to see if the board will approve me taking these to tax sale. I've been working on them for about two years, and I'll leave you all to state requirements to go, and just to see if you guys approve me taking it to the next step.
So, I have one correction, I think. Shirley Crossup, I don't, is it 15.7?
It's showing the figures.
Okay, that's right.
So I'll make the motion that we authorize Doug to go ahead and move forward, and the town will bid on any or all of the properties if no one else is bidding. Motion by Steve Haynes, second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and these will take a couple of months to get to that point, you know, do it all in timelines, and 45 days after it's posted, all kinds of things, but two to two and a half months before they'll actually take place. So I'll let you guys know. Most of them might even make it that point, you know, last time I had Eve, they all paid beforehand, so you never can tell.
Call it, and hopes that's where it goes.
You know, once they start getting lively, it's already, things change a little bit. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you for the time you've put into that, Doug. And next we'll move on to the auditor's report. And we have the three auditors with us this evening.
Good, I'm sorry, I first want to be transparent. My name's Matt Bloom. I ran for governor in Austin, so I want to make sure that that's clear. My intent is to help the town in any way I can, and therefore the auditor position was, two positions were vacant, one actually got handwritten in, so congratulations. Sarah Wild. And then we've had somebody I'm going to call hanging on and really helping us out, which is Lana Burden, so thank you both for your service. So I, I'm going to first ask if the ladies in the room would like to make any comments, or if you'd like to follow what I'm going to read.
I'll go to follow.
Okay. So I do have copies of this, if anybody would like it, but I'm going to try to read it, and so that I'm concise. The actual numbers that are stated here, the other auditors may not have, but the general broad brush strokes that I'm reading here, I hope they can attest to, so that this is fully transparent. So Michelle has been consistently late to meetings, and this is me starting as of April 10. Consistently late to meetings with auditors since 4:10, select four meetings. Twice five to 10 minutes late, one time she was 30 minutes late, and one time she canceled an hour and a half prior to the meeting. Second point, she consistently has nothing prepared when we arrive. Each meeting, we spend majority of time getting information rather than being productive and completing auditing work. We have been providing an agenda well in advance to both town treasurer email and to her personal cell via text. We need information waiting for us when we, waiting for us so we can utilize our time efficiently. Point three, since taking office, cadence of both deposits and payments has dropped off significantly. And this is from when she was actually appointed in July 2024. Just a few examples, as of our review on 5/6, included no bank deposits made by Michelle since 2/27/25. That's two months of interest that we have lost. This is resulting in interest gains being lost by the town. Tax payments are not being made... Tax payments are not being made for payroll deductions, that includes social security and FICA from, from time to time payroll in accordance with, with laws. This includes the most recent 2025 Q1, which was due 4/30/25, not being paid to the IRS or Vermont. Taking a best-case scenario by looking at automatic debits made to our account for state and federal against taxes due from 7/1/24 through 5/6/25, the town will owe approximately $12,429.08 with a minimum of a 5% penalty for federal taxes being late, which amounts to $491.64. Again, after the meeting, if anybody wants copies, I have some available. Paper files do not physically, paper files not physically available or misfiled such that we cannot locate them as needed. Electronic files Michelle has provided indicate significant number of void checks. This includes over 30 for payroll since July 2024. This does not include accounts payable as we have just started receiving this information as of May 6, 2025. Payroll checks issued do not match records, and I should have put in some cases, in the NIMRICs records and same, for the NIMRIC records in the same instance. This includes all payroll checks issued on 3/25/25 are off by a single digit. This means that the coding in the NIMRIC system might state 220,000 and it's actually being cashed at 20,001. It's just an example. This is, this increases time to audit, I think Lana can assess this after, and needs to be corrected in the NIMRIC system to match the bank account statement with correct check number. No amounts paid appear to be correct on initial review. And please keep in mind, a lot of this data we just received on Tuesday, so it's a lot of information. We have missing checks out of sequence, issue number six. Issue number seven, one employee, one town employee is receiving medical insurance reimbursement, and we still have no documentation to provoke, to prove it is required. This sounds like something that has been happening for several years. This is prior to Michelle taking her tenure. And that has been, that being said, we need to show the 85% reimbursement of medical insurance is due and properly paid for, showing employee's check has been cleared by their bank, needs to be on file. I would anticipate the select board or contracts making, or contract exists that authorizes payment in the first place. And just a general comment, when Michelle is present, she is helpful, she provides documents, however, requests have taken much longer than they should. At least, I often feel we are chasing Michelle rather than working to help her. We need to, we need her engaged in the town treasurer position so we can help her. As of Tuesday 5/6, she has provided many documents that we have requested. Based on what we have encountered thus far, I anticipate additional information to be missing or misfiled. So there is a ton of documents. Lana has been holding down the fort, we had an auditor actually come out, Patty, at some point, right? But anyway, prior, so it's been a one-person job until basically April, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Or March?
Yeah, March.
So I'd like to hand it over to the other two auditors. Lana?
Well, I wrote down a few of the things that I found. I like to have Michelle here so that when I have a question, she's here to answer it. However, it's hard to get her here at the same time. And when she says she will come, she doesn't show up. And the last time, she didn't even call me, Matt called me, that she couldn't come because of a problem she had. But I came anyway. So first, well, I did the accounts payable, and there was a late charge of $11.25. I don't know if she got it reversed, or whether she paid it, or whether she just ignored it. Then there was a bill, a missing bill and a check. I have a list of what she's paid versus what she gives me to, to go over. And there was a missing bill as well as a check to go with that bill. There was a dollar off on another addition she did, it was only a dollar, but she wasn't here to tell me why. And then I had three void checks to the same person. It's a waste of checks. And again, I don't know why. There was a ticket to the Mount Taver's store, I couldn't make any sense out of it. There was some of it blocked off, it was a bill that was paid, but it didn't match the, the bill. I, I didn't get to the deposit slips last month because it took me four hours to go through what little bit I did because it was all mixed up. She did help me straighten it out, so I got through the accounts payable, but I didn't get to the deposit slips. And she wasn't here this month, so I couldn't do them this month. And I didn't get April's. So the deposit slips have not gone over. You know, she was late, but only 10 minutes this time, that wasn't too bad. I had a question on the trust funds, and Brad, you may could put in some light on this. We have a cemetery trust fund and Isaac Daniels trust fund, she knows nothing about them. And when Jen McHur was here, I had to sign a paper that she did something with these two funds, but Michelle knows nothing about them. Now, I don't know whether she's supposed to change funds from one to another or why, but I haven't seen any of those papers. There were 17 void checks on the March statement. It's not easy to balance a checkbook with void checks. Then, oh, I was going to try to do the deposit slips yesterday, I came at her regular hours, she was not here. I picked up my check and went home. So I, I don't know, I, I've worked with this since she came, and it's not getting any better. Something has to be done. It takes a long time to do nothing.
So in addition to the comments from Matt and Lana, which I fully agree with and have also personally observed many of those same incidents and some additional ones as well, I also just wanted to add that the other thing that we've kind of run into as we're trying to piece all of this together, as Lana just alluded to with her last comment, there seems to be kind of a general lack of written policy, written standard operating procedure. Everything is kind of been handed off word of mouth. So when we've been looking for how does this process happen, what's the required timeline for this, you know, those types of documentations don't appear to exist, and oftentimes the knowledge may not be there either. This is also, it's from what we understand thus far, seems to be the case regarding a lot of employment-related things. Seems like Michelle in her capacity is responsible for a lot of the onboarding and offboarding of employees, so those processes and the requirements around that, like for, just for example, I, as I mentioned, I joined after the select board meeting in March of, in March of this year, having done an I-9 document or any tax forms or anything along those lines, and it's not clear who's responsible for those types of things. And so there seems to be some gaps in, uh, written policy and practice around these types of things that make the auditor's job a little harder, or a lot harder actually, because we are struggling to piece some of these things together ourselves. So in addition to the issues that we're observing here, you know, that's kind of a secondary thing that I think would help to address what we're facing here. And as we move forward with whatever remedies we've got, you know, I think that's something that the select board ought to take a look at, either directing the various offices to put those types of things in place, or potentially for some of them even looking at putting them in place up at this level. So that's all.
I have no additional comments, other than I wish we could help. We've been trying really hard, we actually scheduled one meeting and it turned into three.
We've been meeting, you know, it's been three, about three, three hours per week roughly since I joined in March. Many of those meetings get canceled or rescheduled. Many of those meetings are spent pulling documentation, looking for documentation, validating what something is or how things are supposed to happen, but it's been a very substantial amount of time, which I know is not consistent with the investment the town intended to make for auditors this year.
So my request would be, the select board needs to take action. That's my ask, because this has gone on long enough. Please.
So you're asking us to endorse this letter that you brought?
So the select board, we have provided a letter to the select board with council's help in order to request Michelle provide all documentation. Now again, we have a lot of documentation, she has helped provide a lot of that electronically, so I have both her copy and electronic copy, which will help go through it quicker. Things like time cards and any procedures that do exist, which we haven't seen one, we have seen the union agreement, take a lot of time to go through. The paperwork for AP stuff is a ton of information, and it's very hard to go through because it's often not in order. So we are going to do our best to go through that information, but we would like to reserve the right to enact that letter if we have to. And again, that is, we never wanted to get to this point. We provided agendas the day we basically assigned the meeting or the day after, so she said five days. I've asked her the best way to communicate. She said she doesn't get her town email because she can't read it on her phone. So I asked her, is it okay to send you a text? So I've literally been taking a picture of the email that I send and sending it to her phone. I've gotten some responses, but few. So generally, people have different ways to communicate. I haven't found a way to communicate successfully with Michelle, other than when she's here. She's been good. I, I can't refute that. She has been responsive, but getting her here is, 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 it's like pulling teeth. It's very difficult. And it, honestly, I think all of us are very busy, and I know summer's here, so Lana's going to be very busy as well. Gratitude to her for, for keeping up with us, and I really request we need help, the town's help, because I am concerned there's way more in the cracks. This is just broad brushstrokes that we're, that we're missing here.
So before we continue this conversation, I'd just like to comment on what Sarah said about policies and procedures. And a few years back, Doug retired as treasurer, and before he left, he took a lot of time putting procedural manuals together that outline how things are done, when they are done, and so forth. And I'm looking at them right there on the top of the filing cabinet. So to my way of thinking, if there's a question, you simply open up the book and refer to that particular procedure, and it's covered how to do it. And if there isn't, then you should be asking questions. And personally, I have offered probably at least seven to 10 times to Michelle, if there's a question, please ask me. Don't let it get to the point where it becomes an embarrassment either to yourself or to the town. And I can't say I've been asked any questions.
She doesn't pay the bills that time, Brad.
Exactly.
I have a lot of bills that were paid from November, and I said, why wasn't this paid by, back in November? And she said, no.
And we discussed that at the last meeting, and we've had turn-off notices from the electric company.
We had a lot of great turn-off.
We've had problems with the union dues, so on and so on, but I, I don't need to reiterate that. So the auditors with council have come up with a letter, which I'll read, and then if the board wishes, you can make a motion to authorize sending it. And it's addressed to Michelle at her home address, and it's referencing official request for treasurer records pursuant to 24 VSA subsection 1686 C1 and 2. Dear Michelle, as you know, the Danby auditors are conducting an audit of town payroll and accounts payable records. We appreciate the information you have provided so far. However, we are still, we still require additional records that have not yet been submitted. Please provide the following records and information within five business days of your receipt of this request. One, all employee time cards ending Wednesday, July 7, 2024 through May 4, 2025. Two, all payroll deduction payments, records, healthcare insurance, et cetera, for the week ending July 7, 24 through May 4, 25. Three, all records of payment of reimbursement to Janice Arnold and Clifford Hughes medical expense reimbursement for the period of July 1, 24 through May 4, 25. Four, all accounts payable records for the period July 1, 24 through May 4, 25. Five, all checkbook registers for the period July 1, 24 through May 4, 25. Six, itemized list of all deposits made to the town accounts and investments for the period July 1, 24 through May 4, 25. Seven, all records showing the status of payroll account payable checks, which are missing from the sequence. Example, check 22099, 22285, 2286, et cetera. This is a written request in accordance with statute. If you will, fully refuse, or neglect to submit the requested records to the Danby auditors or to provide all necessary information related to these records, after at least five business days following the receipt of this written request, you will be personally liable to the town for a civil penalty of $100 a day until you submit or provide the requested records and information. The town may initiate legal action in the Civil Division of the Superior Court to enforce the production of the requested records and the imposition of the penalty. And this is authorized under 24 VSA subsection 1681 C1 and 2. If you have any questions regarding this request, please reform us immediately. And it has been signed by the three auditors, and now we are being asked for the select board members to sign it as well. So entertain a motion to that effect. So I'd like to just point out that Michelle has been going through a lot of personal issues in her life that's making things difficult. And that being said, I make the motion, we sign it.
I will second that.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded, and I will also add as part of the conversation that I am aware of her personal issues, she has discussed them with me, and I am sympathetic, but I also understand that but I also understand that town business does not stop because of these things. That's why the law provides for an assistant. And simply, business has to go on. If it's so difficult that one cannot devote the necessary time, then one needs to seriously consider resigning from the position. So all in favor of signing the letter, sending it, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous, Brad?
Yes, that is unanimous. And that was made by Steve Haynes and seconded by Ken Abbott.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is a request of the clerk, an assistant clerk, to, thank you, to include ballot clerk pay in retirement account. And the letter that we received is addressed to the Select Board. And it says, Collette Yersha and I are requesting the following. Retirement insurance set up for the ballot clerk category by Jen Millard, who is the former treasurer. The rate would depend on the rate of that year. In addition, I am requesting a retirement percentage of 7% retroactive to January 2024, figured on my current payroll account and on the ballot clerk account. For your information, beginning in January 2011, the rate of retirement was 6%. Nimerick Representative Cynthia Stoddard stated that the retirement benefits should have been in effect under the ballot clerk account since 2011. And this is signed by Janice Arnold. And we did have discussion at a previous meeting about acting on this retroactively because somehow it seems to have slipped through the cracks that everybody except Janice was given the increase to 7%. So I will entertain a motion to include ballot clerk pay in the retirement account.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Haynes.
And I will second that.
Seconded by Abbott. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion has carried. Next, we have a letter from the clerk. There's apparently been some confusion about the health benefits and in the auditor's report, this was referred to. So, May 5th, 2025, Select Board, I am asking for a confirmation of my health insurance reimbursement, which is 85% of submitted invoices. The treasurer and auditors are unable to find documentation for this transaction. I was taken off the Blue Shield Health Insurance Program in December 2018 and the new program began in January 19. Sincerely, Janice Arnold. And she notes that it was approved at, oh, she's asking that it be approved at the Select Board meeting of May 8th, 2025. So this is a practice that's been in effect since the plan was changed back in 2018. And it's been going on since that time.
This is to retroactive to bring it back up to what it's.
No, it's not retroactive. It's just to continue it at 85%, which it has been since 2018. It's just that apparently, nothing was put in the minutes about it.
Are we looking to? Are we looking to continue? Are you looking for proof that it's been paid?
No, no, I'm not. I am just doing this to just.
So that there's documentation?
Yes, for the auditors.
I will make the motion that we continue.
I will second that.
Okay, motion is made by Haynes, seconded by Abbott, to continue the health insurance reimbursement at 85% of submitted invoices. And.
Proof of payment and deposit is required. Just like every other.
Well, I think we're going to address one thing at a time. And the first is to have the proper documentation. And there's a motion to that effect right now. Is there any discussion about ratifying that? Okay, all in favor of continuing it at 85%? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion has passed and we're going to sign that letter. So I am not quite sure. I know when I sign the reimbursement checks, Janice has faithfully included a copy of her check attached to the request. Now you're saying that you want to see the canceled check?
So typically, what happens on any payment that comes into the town, we receive a bill, which would be, in Janice's case, it would basically be the stub on her bill or something that shows that that's related to her health insurance. For example, she showed me her medical card and it showed an RX. To me, that's acceptable, but a second auditor would need to approve.
Yeah, that's. But the, I think the only thing that we were looking for was something that showed both what it was for and the amount. Doesn't have to be a canceled check specifically. That's all it was.
Yeah, either canceled check or the account statement showing that her check actually cleared the bank. Just as we verify, a payroll check is issued and it clears the bank. It's the same procedure for every bill that comes in, every bill that is paid. If you're looking for payment via the bill, the check, and the bank account statement and/or canceled check is sufficient.
Comment?
None whatsoever.
And we do have the documentation from Blue Shield, Blue Cross dated 12/12/2018. Janice Arnold, please accept this notice of termination for the former plan. And it's, the reason is voluntary withdrawal. But apparently, we never got another letter saying welcome to the new plan.
Well, it's not a new plan as such. I had to go and get my, well, first of all, through social security. I have a portion taken out for medical. And then I have supplemental. And those are the three that I submit. And I believe it's somewhere, I have the total in the other room, but it's somewhere, I think, around $500 a month, which is considerably less than what you would be paying someone on Blue Cross, Blue Shield, per month. I do believe. So, that being said, I have no problem giving, you know, when I, when the check clears, or the three, two checks clear, giving a copy of the.
Okay, so I don't think we need to have a motion on that. Are the auditors satisfied that Janice agrees to your request?
Yep, yes.
We're happy.
I showed you and you never picked them up.
Because the files were not properly done yet. So when we came in here on the 6th, they weren't filed. I came in here on Wednesday, just as Lana came, and the treasurer wasn't here. So I'm really trying to only access files when somebody else is here witnesses me accessing the files. Because of where we are today, we need to.
And that's why it's a board of three. There should be at least two people.
There needs to be at least two people. Two auditors should be here accessing the files ideally. And we access the files together one day to try to help you find the information. That probably was breaking the rules. But I'm being transparent.
Okay, so I think we can move forth then, right?
I would certainly hope so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
Next, we have been in receipt of a note from Mark Shea up at the the, help me out with the acronym here. Rotland Regional Solid Waste District. There is a used compactor that the town of Pittsford is looking to see if some other town would like to have. And they sent pictures of it and so forth. Seems like the consensus is we're moving away from compactors, but.
Well, at our last, when we went to Mount Tabor dump, I got the impression that at the very least, Tom and Greg were not in favor of moving away from the compactors. Because Tom kept trying to figure out how we were gonna put a compactor in down there. This is a compactor that the town themselves own or are they leasing?
No, it sounds like they own it.
What are they asking for?
From what I'm reading there, it's free to a good home. Is that the way you read it, Ken?
Yeah, it's, when they need an holder. And they're not actually asking a monetary figure. But I guess my question would be is why are they getting rid of it? Unless they're changing, you know, their idea of their waste facility.
You know, say they just sent pictures of it. So maybe it's the type of thing that you'd like to talk with Mark more about and get the particulars on it.
Before I went too far, I'd like to see if it run. I'd hate to volunteer to go get it and find out that it needs.
How come I don't hear a noise?
$10,000 worth of work before we can ever use it.
Okay.
You're getting a vote.
So I think there's no motion on it, so we'll just refer this to the road foreman who oversees the operation out there. How's that?
Well, I can tell you right now, it's 23 years old.
We would be getting something more of a headache than we would be.
That's what I'm wondering. I will get ahold of Mark at some point here right off and discuss it with him and see if I can schedule time to go look at it. But being a 23-year-old machine, I'm leery of it.
If it's something that you feel is worthwhile, then let me know and we'll put it on the June agenda. How's that?
Yeah. The only thing that the pictures really don't show good is actually where you even load at. And it looks to me like it needs a remote power unit for it.
Yeah, I was wondering what the hydraulic fitting is for.
So I'll get ahold of Mark and we'll go from there. But I'm, myself, I'm leaning towards we don't want it.
Okay, and then the next item is to set a date and prices for dump day. And it's the 19th of July when we're having the solid waste collection.
Am I allowed? Did I not give you?
You did, and I'm, I'm not finding the piece of paper that it was written on. Go on your calendar there and see if Saturday, July 19th, see if July 19th is a Saturday.
Yes, 19th is a Saturday.
Okay, so memory hasn't failed yet, thank goodness.
Yes, sir. It is July 19th.
Okay, so there's a solid waste collection date scheduled for Danby. That's when you can bring used paint cans and all that good stuff that you couldn't normally dump down for collection. And typically, we coordinate with those days. So I make the motion, we set the date for July 19th. Okay. And that would be seven to four, the typical dump hours?
Yeah.
Okay, motion is made by Haynes, seconded by Abbott. And any discussion on that? All in favor of the 19th, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've established that. And everybody has the price list from last year. Do we want to change anything there? Last year, we upped the appliances because of the increased costs of getting things out of here that have Freon in them. So refrigerators and freezers went up to $45. And air conditioners went up to $25.
Is it 45 and 25?
Yes.
I know we discussed last time about the mattresses and box springs. It costs more for us to get rid of them, more than the $10.
Right.
Do we want to raise those or is there a lot that come in at that time?
Unfortunately, I don't think we have anybody here that can speak to that.
I don't know about mattresses. I know we had a lot of appliances last year because we filled the back with dump truck full. And the other one was just about full of tires.
Yeah, so tires are going for $5, truck tires for $6. Metal articles are rather inexpensive. Filing cabinets, desks, lawn mowers, barbecue grills for $5 apiece. My personal take on it would be that all of the $5 items should be raised. My personal take on it would be that all of the $5 items should be raised. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. I know we get into the, you know, the conversation about, well, we don't want to see things thrown by the side of the road, but on the other hand, we continually lose money on this operation. And I'm not saying we have to make money, but I think we should aim at getting a little bit closer to breaking even.
Do you have a number in mind that you would like to go from the 5?
Probably 8 or 10. I mean, when I see a large table, a bureau, or a desk for $5, I think that's rather inexpensive. And it's the, it's based on weight, right, of the dumpsters when they pull them? So those are, you know, wooden desks are heavy. Carpets are heavy.
Well, I don't want to raise it too much all at once, so I'll make the motion we go to $8.
Okay. So the $5 items go to 8. And is that including the tires or not?
Anybody know what it costs to get rid of a tire when you recycle one?
Well, like if you have the tires changed on your vehicle, and they said you want us to get rid of them for you.
I'd leave the tires right where they are because we've already picked them up aside their own this year.
Well, I'm thinking it's pretty much in line with what the tire places get.
Chat GPT says $5.
The what?
Chat GPT says $5 in Vermont.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so the motion then would be to raise chairs, plumbing fixtures, appliances like washers, dryers, stoves, and dishwashers, carpets, rugs, computer parts and electronics, dining room chairs and small furniture, large tables, and metal objects like filing cabinets to $8. Do I hear a motion?
You got a motion. We're waiting for a second.
Oh, you got a second. Okay. So motion's made and seconded to raise those items to $8. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda is the second reading of the Code of Ethics Investigation and Enforcement There have been no changes made to it since the last time around, and someone wishes to make a change to it, I'm going to ask that we dispense with reading the four pages because my voice is getting kind of weak unless somebody else wants to read it. It's out there in the minutes. This was the boilerplate model ordinance that we received from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We simply filled in the blanks with Danby. Tracy?
Can I get a hard copy of that?
Sure. Would you pass that to Tracy, please?
Oh, I don't. Do you have a number?
I don't.
Um, well, I just wanted to copy this.
Oh, well, we can get you a copy. Sure. I thought you just wanted
No, I don't have a computer, so I don't have access.
Okay. So this would be a motion to adopt, this would be a motion to adopt the Ethics Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance as put forth at the April 10th meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by FIS
I'll second.
Or Haynes.
It's stupid I can't send your email to, or Haynes, that's what's doing it to me.
Use the other email, then.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Steve Haynes, seconded by Ken Abbott, to adopt the ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that motion is, that ordinance is now adopted. And I will enter, will move into the road commissioner's report. And Steve, would you like to report on current projects?
I'll do it. So anyhow, we are in the process of working on Otis Road to make a better detour for when we close down Timothys Line. We have four culverts that we're replacing on Timothys Line this spring so that hopefully this fall, we can have smooth transition when we blacktop and not have humps in the road. That's coming along pretty good, and we're, if the weather will cooperate, we have like four roads left to grade, and our first round of grading will be done for the year. And that's it.
Thank you.
Those are our projects.
Okay, so we only have one fleet permit that has come in this month, and that is for Miles Lumber. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve it. I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have the mutual aid agreement. So we have appointed Tom Fuller as the primary aiding official, Steve Haynes as the alternate, Bradley Bender as the primary requesting official, and Kenneth Abbott Jr. as the alternate requesting official. And this is where if one community needs to borrow some kind of equipment from another, we help out.
Can you repeat the primary requesting official?
The primary requesting official is Bradley Bender, and the alternate is Ken Abbott So I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made by
I will second.
Haynes, seconded by Abbott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so approved and executed at Danby this 8th day of May Okay, so that is done. And then a motion to approve the municipal roads general permit agreement. And this is where the state gets to charge us money for the stormwater that runs off into the streams, swamps, and so forth.
Well, they make us sign it every year, so I'll make the motion we sign it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haynes and Mr. Abbott for seconding it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've dispensed with the old business that was listed there. Are we interested in participating in the fiscal year 26 Grants and Aid Program? If so, we've got to get that letter in by the 23rd. Steve says yes. Are you making a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion that we participate in Grants and Aid Program.
I will second that.
And it's been seconded by Ken Abbott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, any other new business? Well, then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.